Steph, are you ready?
Yes.
I'd like to welcome everybody out for our commission meeting on this... Our agenda doesn't have the date yet. It is May 1st, 2017. If everyone would please rise and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and jump right into this and get, hopefully move through it fairly quickly. We'll do the approval of minutes. We have several sets of minutes. The first set of minutes we'll look at is the March 8th, 2017 meeting minutes.
First, I didn't have any changes in that one. I'd make a motion to approve unless you had anything to change.
I saw no changes. I'll step down a second now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next set of minutes we have is the March 15th, 2017 minutes. I saw no changes.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve those.
I'll step down a second now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next set that we have are the March 15th commission meeting minutes. I guess the record should show those were both March 15th. The last set of minutes was the work meeting. Let's make sure we show that. This is the commission meeting minutes for the same day, March 15th.
I didn't have any changes in that set either. Thank you, Lori. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll step down a second now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next set of minutes we have are for the April 19th. I guess it was more of a bid opening. It wasn't even a commission meeting.
So, the question I had, Christian, where there were two of us gone, we had to go ahead and take care of those. Motioning to accept these doesn't really work, so...
Did we accept the bids? It wasn't a motion. It was just we accepted.
On the weed and chemicals?
We read in the bids.
So, yeah, I think we just read them in and I think what we've done typically is bought from a variety...
From a variety of... But I was not at that meeting, so should I go ahead and approve those?
I think that's okay, though. I think it's okay to award them as they've been because all we did was acknowledge them at that point.
Okay.
So, I think that's okay.
So, I'd go ahead and make that motion to accept those minutes.
Okay. I'll step down a second now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number two, award bids for weed and mosquito chemicals. Chris, would you come explain what you've done here? Give us a rundown.
Okay. So, I broke it down into weed chemicals and also mosquito chemicals. And then on the chemical name, the ones that are highlighted in red that you have in front of you, that's the chemicals that were placed on the bid sheet. And the companies, other companies is putting other bids for other chemicals. And so, on the mosquito, the ones that were bidding were the same, were the same price. So, I'm not sure. I guess you can buy them from either company. I'm not sure how that works. The chemicals that they bid the same price with. Some of the chemicals, one company has, some of the chemicals the other company has. And so, they were the only bidders on some of these chemicals, so... That's on the mosquitoes. On the weed chemicals, we had four companies that bid on these. And so, again, I highlighted in red the name of the chemical. And then, since we buy chemical, I went and highlighted the price that was the lowest price for that chemical, for that company. And so, that's what we'd buy from. Have any questions to that, or...
So, I think in the past, we have, after they've been opened and analyzed like this, we've turned it back to the maintenance and department to go ahead and make those purchases based upon those lowest prices. I don't remember that we've ever had one that has been, you know, exactly the same across.
Same, yeah.
So, I don't know how, in all fairness, flip a quarter. I don't know.
You know, I think that's what we've done. Either we've tried to, for example, with title companies, we've just tried to take turns because they charge the same thing for title reports. So, I suppose you could divide it up between the two. Or if chemicals were purchased from one last year, you could purchase it from a different one this year. But I don't know that we have a formal policy on that. So, I think you're fine actually buying from either one, subject to the commissioner's approval on that.
So, I would make a motion to go ahead and accept, you know, the analysis of those chemicals, turning it back to you to make those purchases. Also, with a reminder within our purchase process, was IFA local? Was that our local IFA?
Yes, uh-huh.
So, if it's within 10% of the others, that could be an option to purchase those chemicals locally.
Okay.
And that'd be my motion.
I'll step down a second now. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chris. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of 2017 cooperative agreement for Utah State University Extension Services. Ellen Surfastini. I don't see Ellen.
I...go ahead.
I reviewed it, commissioners. I'm fine with it. The only question I had is on section, or paragraph three. It lists two options there with how support staff is to be paid. I can't remember whether we do option one or two. It says option one shall provide USU with the dollar amount to obtain support staff, or option two, the county shall provide the support staff.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's number two.
Okay. So, we probably ought to circle that and the final one that we signed. But otherwise, I didn't have any concerns.
And I was just gonna add, it is the same basic contract for services with the Extension Office. And they are housed here in our building. So, on appendix A is the costs associated with the one other person and the temporaries that they use during their summer programs. And I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I'll step down a second now. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number four, update on Boys and Girls Club of Carbon County. If you'd like to come up to the mic and introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what's going on at the Boys and Girls Club.
It's always changing. I'm Brenda Quick. I just, I stepped in in December just as an interim director. While we searched, as everyone know, we had some difficulties at the end of the year and we appreciated the county's support. To help us, we're doing a merge. But I'm also, this is our new director, Olivia Dudding.
Dudding.
Dudding. That she's been hired as a permanent position for a director. And she's gonna give you an update of how we're gonna merge. And then, we want to ensure the county that any donations, things like that, that the county does or anything is staying here. Our merge is mostly to help us on the administrative, financial side that will take that burden off that is not available in grant money and things. So, we'll still be doing and operating the same, but better because Olivia has a lot more experience. So, go ahead.
In terms of an update, we are working towards July 1st as an official date to be part of the Greater Salt Lake Boys and Girls Club. And they are a really fantastic organization. Leanne Saldivar is actually Utah's CEO of the Year. So, that's exciting. But essentially, we are using the know-how and the resources of Greater Salt Lake to help Carbon County to expand and to have a really cool after-school program. I'm also available to answer any questions. I'm not sure what you're looking for, so...
I know that it had been mentioned that the merger was happening. This is a new position for you. You could certainly take a minute and introduce yourself to the community. And that would be a great opportunity for us to get to know you a little bit better, too.
Absolutely. Yeah, we are working on possibly May 11th as an open house date where we can also answer questions about our summer program that's coming up. I've worked with the Boys and Girls Club organization in Salt Lake for four years and have held different positions. And, yeah, I feel pretty excited to be here. I just moved here.
So, is that where you're transferring from, is from Salt Lake?
From Salt Lake. Yep.
And will there be much of a change to the programs? To what's offered there, expansion of programs? Or is it gonna be the same?
So, we're gonna take some baby steps to get there, but we're hoping to definitely expand our programming. A little bit at a time. We want to make sure to sustain what we have going on before we can expand. But we have a lot of really great resources and the building is really incredible. So, I feel that in the next few years, we should be able to have a program that encompasses quite a few kids.
Great.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, commissioner?
When you do nail down that open house, will you please let us know?
Absolutely. I'll send you an email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
You, too.
Thank you. Item number five, termination of Quail Hollow subdivision. Neldon Huff. Please, just for the record, state your name and then we'll go ahead and discuss.
My name is Neldon Huff, resident of Quail Hollow subdivision. I'd like to approach the bench.
Thanks, Neldon. I can put that in his box, okay?
Requesting a termination of Quail Hollow Homeowners Association. Requested that Quail Hollow Homeowners Association is established on the 15th day of September 1981, recorded in Book 210 of Records, page 478-504, by Carbon County Recorder Ann O'Brien on September 16th at 3:05 PM 1981. Be terminated under Article 9, General Provisions, Section 2, Page 19, 496 of the Declaration of Protective Covenants and Restrictions of Quail Hollow, Carbon County, Utah, and attached to the homeowner's signatures as required by Article 3, Section 2, on the Voting Rights. Your second page there shows the layout of the Quail Hollow. The third and fourth page lists the provisions as stated in paragraph one and two. And I have a reasons for this termination, mainly because nothing is happening. There is no Quail Hollow Homeowners Association as indicated by these papers. It was established in 81 and approximately, from what I can hear, 84, 85. The guy that was doing the money collections for the project out there disappeared, along with the money. So, nothing has really been done in Quail Hollow since about that time.
And that was when?
My estimations would be about 85, somewhere in 1985, somewhere in there. These funds were supposed to be used for road maintenance and utilization of snow removal and upkeep of the area. Well, that has not been done. Of all of the homeowners out in the properties now, none of us were aware that it was even a HOA until we received the final paperwork after purchases had been completed. Other was probably, none of us would be out there because of the situation. The reasons for us to want to do this is, one of the reasons is mainly snow removal in the winter. We would call the county, oh, that's private road.
Right.
Can't touch it. So, we need to get rid of this association in order for the county to maintain our roadways in and out of that project, plus also down the road to upgrade or improve road conditions to the standards of the county. For improvements to happen, we need to incorporate the cost to a tax base to the association owners out there so that the county will recoup any money spent in their upkeep through our taxation program, like a 20-year, 10-year loan, whatever it takes to do the work. And that is basically what we're trying to do here.
The one question I had is, and I hadn't had a chance to flip through here, but we have at least 75% of the owners out there.
We have almost, we have 100%.
Okay.
Yes. In fact, there's two corporations that are involved in this also that own property out there.
So, from 1985 to present, has anybody paid any assessments?
Nope. I talked to a farmer owner that was there when it first started and it lasted about three to four years, what she told me.
And then it was gone.
And then they moved out.
It looks, Christian, and it looks to me like, you know, with those owners and the termination, we can easily take care of that. And then it'd have to go through another process as far as the roads themselves because they would still remain private roads within the subdivision, even if we did away with the HOA.
Yeah, that's correct. Getting rid of the HOA would not by and of itself make those roads public county roads. So, assuming that that's what the provisions of the CCNRs say is that it takes that 75% vote and then approval by the county commission to get rid of it. Sure, I'm sure you could disband the HOA and this...you could disband the HOA. I don't think that, not sure that gets rid of the subdivision plat itself, but I'd have to look at that a little more to make sure that... So, you could still have a subdivision, I suppose, without an HOA in it. But I don't think getting rid of the HOA by and of itself makes those, that road a county road. Was it dedicated to the county? That road was never dedicated to the county, was it? When the subdivision came in?
The hearsay that I have is the lady that purchased this ground and went into an LLC out of Salt Lake when they first built the program itself. Since then, she has sold all of the property rights with the exception of the roadway. So, technically, she still owns the road.
And see, for it to become a county road, she would have to deed it over to the county. And then, on every other subdivision, whenever a subdivision is made, part of that subdivision approval process requires that the county road be upgraded to meet county road standards before it becomes a county road. And that's usually done by the developer ahead of time.
Mm-hmm. And it was Carol Pacheco that was involved in this association setup.
Okay.
And she no longer lives in this state.
I think she moved to Colorado.
I think she's in Colorado from the last hearsay that I had. Her one son still lives here, I believe, or a brother, something to that effect. And he just sold out his last remaining piece of property to another owner out there. So...but whatever it takes, we would like to...I don't know how we'd get her to deed it over to the county. What steps?
Well, and I'm wondering if in the title work, it would actually show...
That she owns it?
That she owns it. Or if you, as property owners, own it already.
Yeah, I think some title work might need to be done. And then, the county doesn't want a deed unless the road standards are, roads brought up to standards, though.
And I had the county road supervisor come out and look at the area. And his estimation was approximately about $115,000 to $120,000 to do a sublay on it, a two-inch overlay, and then resurface the whole thing. Carbon gutter drainage is all good. It's just the road itself.
It's just the asphalt, the concretes and good shape.
It's starting to separate because there's been a lot of heavy equipment go through there. And we can't stop them. We put the private road signs up, but that doesn't slow the people down either, so...
Is there, I guess, is there an option to keep the HOA intact and form, pay to yourselves, figure out a way to set up a bank account where it runs like an HOA? You pay your fees into it. Kind of similar to what you're saying is where you would pay for it over time through a special assessment area. In that situation, you would just pay for it over time and then have the money keep regenerating every year because of your fees to continue maintenance and/or upgrade the property as you, as homeowners, see fit.
That's a big challenge because I don't think the people out there is gonna want to donate any money towards that because of the way the conditions are now. That's, and I, myself personally, I wouldn't want to because I don't see where the roadway would be deeded part of our property, on the frontage of our property, because we're eliminated right up to the sidewalk and that's it, on my plat. So, I don't know how that would work to re-deed it.
Probably that. And I'm just looking through the information here, Neldon, and trying to see if the county really has to even vote to do away with the HOA. Because it, to me, it looks like it, as long as 75% of the first mortgage holders, as long as they're in agreement with it, that it could be terminated.
Well, like I say, there's nothing really to terminate.
Right.
So, this is the predicament we're in.
I don't know that there's anything for us to do other than say, you know, as a landowners there, it looks like you've got all the signatures you need to justify, you know, just simply terminating it yourself without any approval or action on our part. There's a lot of, you know, subdivisions in price that were built years ago that don't have CCNRs on or HOAs. So, I guess I'm looking for some direction on that. But I don't, in a quick read here, I don't see any...
Who would I look to?
Well, I think what you ought to do is you ought to make it as a resolution that's...
So, it could be recorded.
So, it can be recorded. Resolution and then have your, probably need to get everybody's signatures on there and form a committee, actually form a board that can accept the dissolution of the HOA. I mean, you need, what you need to do is have something that can be recorded.
Recorded it to recorder's office itself.
Yeah. And for something like that. So, you'll need somebody who's authorized to have a signature on there on behalf of everybody and notarize his signature.
But that doesn't take care of the second part of that.
No.
And that's the plowing of the roads.
Right.
And so, that's kind of the other part of that, that I was trying to... If you didn't dissolve it and/or you reformulated it and started collecting those fees from the homeowners, could you then start doing some of that maintenance?
It's a lot of maintenance.
It is.
And we don't have the equipment for it to start with.
Well...
We would have to hire it done. And we're talking into the big bucks now because of, this last winter was really a bugger because we had people, we couldn't even get the garbage trucks in there. They were getting stuck.
We're going through that, the process with one other subdivision that is, you know, looking to be paved. And so, there is that a possibility of going, add it through a special assessment area. And that's, I think that's where Commissioner Hopes is going, that we would need some type of a committee, some type of, you know, association, if you want to call it that, that could then come and work through planning and zoning, see what those requirements were. And then, if, again, if the, I can't remember the percentage of the owners there were in favor of taxing themselves over a period of time, then those roads can be upgraded and put into...
So, I guess I, what I need to do then would be to record this, to recorder's office, disband, and then come to the planning and zoning commission meetings to get some idea of where I have to go and which direction to travel.
Right. And work with the engineer and get some of that basic information. And then, you know, that could come back and be formulated and looked at to see if it was acceptable to you as property owners to get it to that standard where it could then become a county road.
Okay.
And at the same time, we'd have to get, we'd have to find out who owns the road and...
That's right. We can figure that out. I think, though, before you go to the planning commission, if I were you, I'd go talk to the county engineer first.
County engineer.
Talk to him first, yeah.
Okey-dokey.
So, I don't see that we have any motion on this. Yes, with support in your actions, but...
Hang on to your papers.
What's that?
Hang on to your papers.
Well, hang on to the papers and start a file because you've got a lot of signatures. You may go down and talk with Lori.
Okay.
See what kind of a document she may need or, you know, maybe you've got copies of this, I'm sure.
Yeah, so I do.
But see what she would recommend as far as that goes.
Okay. All righty.
And then we'll see the picture.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neldon.
Thanks. Item number six, consideration and possible approval of memorandum of understanding with Price River Waters, Prywide, Price River Water Improvement District for establishing solid waste disposal fees at the county landfill. Commissioners, because of the fee that was implemented at the landfill, we allowed for other governmental entities to approach us with an MOU with other rates that could be negotiated. In this agreement, they have asked that the fees be waived for the amount of dirt that they haul in from their projects. They haul in quite a bit of material that we use for cover material. And in return for that cover material, they would like their fees to be waived. One thing that I, I'm not 100% sure on is I don't want to play favorites over one entity to another. I think whatever we implement, we should implement across the board and try and be as... So, we take the politics out and we say this is the rate that we're going to charge governmental entities. That's my personal opinion. So, I don't know. We have, Price City has also put in a proposal for waste. And Helper is coming to talk to me tomorrow. And I'm not sure who else. I don't, who else is coming to talk. But those are the ones that I know of as of this date. So, I don't know what we want to do with this contract, if we're ready to approve something.
You know, Commissioner Hopes, I think that while we work through that municipal, if you want to call it fee structure, I think that we ought to table this one. Because, yes, we do take cover material at no charge from, you know, any number of contractors or municipal organizations. And so, I think we just need to assess and see, you know, down the road if we want to change that charge per tonnage that we've established already. So, I would make a motion to table it and to tentatively bring it back on our next commission meeting.
Okay. Does that need a second?
Uh, yes.
I'll step down a second now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, who's handling the agendas?
You are right now?
We are. Okay. Thank you.
Would you put that, would you put that back on for... Yes. May 8th?
What is it? 17th.
Wednesday, the 17th.
Yep. Okay. Item number seven, consideration and possible approval of memorandum of, memorandum of understanding between Carbon County and Price River Water Improvement District for handling of NRCS EWP grant. Justin, since you're here, do you want to cover this?
Sure. Good afternoon, noon. So, we have, currently have some EWP funding. I don't have the paperwork with me. It's approximately $1.5 million to do some river improvement projects down in the Wellington area, which would be east of the First East Bridge. That's a Prywide project area. And it would be things like debris removal and protecting Prywide itself around their plant so they don't have any more damage if we have flooding in that area. And it's been discussed as to who's gonna pay with that. And it's been discussed as to who's going to pay with that grant is a twenty-five percent match. And it's been discussed who's going to cover that twenty-five percent match.
Stating in the contract that it's Prywide.
Yep.
Will come up with that. This seems to be just like what we've done with the last grant for the flooding, that we are just simply the pass-through organization.
Not necessarily on this, this one.
Because this doesn't all benefit Prywide's a problem, and they've said we're not going to pay to protect a lot of the other stuff.
If I read this right, it actually said that the county would be responsible for the payment. Isn't that what it said, Christian?
Well.
But we were going to try and provide everything as in-kind.
No, I, I, they asked that we be responsible, but I think it still says that they're going to waive, they're going to indemnify us and, and release us in the extent that payment's not made. So what it was, where it was going to be different was that we were going to do the procurement of the construction, of the, of the design and the construction, and administer that contract for them is what I believe we were going to do. So in other words, they still, they, they still have to come up with the in-kind amounts and they, and they're responsible to provide all the matching.
The one nice thing about this, we do have a rock source that is really close to that, that should cover the majority of the match for this project, so.
But, but we agreed to administer the contract for the work and design.
As the sponsor.
As a sponsor, and that, that's where it is different, is the other ones all did that. The other governmental entities did that on their own, and we've said here, well, we'll, we'll do your procurement for you and ma, and pay for the, hire the professionals to get it done.
But in, but in this agreement, in the first paragraph, it says the agreement also provides that Carbon County will provide matching funds or in-kind contributions, the amount of twenty-five percent. So, are they going to put anything into it?
Well, section five says that they agree to provide twenty-five percent of the matching funds. That Prywide does.
So, yeah, so our, our contract with NRCS says that it's the county that's going to do it because we're the pass-through entity.
But number five says that Prywide.
That's right.
Further agrees that they will provide the twenty-five percent match required by, required to be provided by Carbon County.
Right. So we are on the, it's only us that's on the agreement with NRCS, so we have to be the ones to say that we're going to provide the twenty-five percent, but actually, it is going to be Prywide who's going to provide the twenty-five percent.
Okay, and just, just for public information, what we're working on is making this agreement so that there's no out-of-pocket cash from either the county or from Prywide. We will use all in-kind either labor and or resources, rock or dirt or equipment to meet that match so that it won't be a, a financial burden on either Prywide or the county.
And it's, it's a great opportunity again because it helps with those issues we've had with the river down in, in the Wellington area in the past, so I mean, it's, it's good, it's a good grant for all involved.
Yes, it is.
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve.
I'll step down a second then. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Justin.
Problem.
Hey, why don't you just stay there for a second?
Okay.
Consideration of possible approval for application for emergency management performance grant, EMPG, Justin Needles.
Yeah, so every year we apply for the emergency management performance grant. It's approximately forty-four thousand dollars worth of funds. It is a fifty, fifty match. So we'll have to provide forty-four thousand dollars as well. That's met in my salaries, Whitney's salaries, and our cert coordinator's salary, so it just help alleviates the cost of our salaries.
Okay. So you're just seeking approval to?
Yep, so the application deadline's May fifth, so we just need signatures on a couple documents saying we can apply for it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll step down a second then. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Okay. 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 Thank you. Item number nine, consideration and possible approval of contract for indigent, indigent capital defense council service. Jeremy, do you want to handle this? Christian, do you want to handle this? I'm not sure who.
I'll just introduce it. It, it, this is basically a statement as to what the indigent capital defense fund is going to pay on a certain case that's now pending in, in our court here in Carbon County. And it sets forth the limits as to what it will pay and who it will pay that to. As you saw, it's broken out into twenty thousand dollar increments, twenty thousand prior to a certain, a limit of twenty thousand dollars if it's resolved up to a certain stage of the trial. Another twenty thousand if it goes into the trial, and so forth. And then there are breakdowns for expenses that it will pay for the defense counsel. So it pays for the defense counsel of a gentleman named Rudy Batista and an assistant attorney, both of whom are approved to handle capital defense, capital murder cases. And our judge in this particular case is required that the defendant have that type of representation in this case. So with that, I'll let Jeremy say anything else that might be relevant to that.
I just came in case you had any questions. I think it's a great thing for the county that the fund is picking up the bill on that. So we're at the first benchmark. We just had that hearing last Wednesday, so the defense has cost twenty thousand dollars so far. And that's, that's where we're at.
Well, of course it did. That's what it was set at. Okay.
So this, so I think the agreement just calls for the county to acknowledge the agreement and so that you know what's in there and, and approve it. That this shouldn't cost the county anything as.
Yeah, as long as the money.
Beyond sixty thousand dollars, right? Or twenty per phase.
Right, and does it indicate if it goes beyond that? I don't think that'll come back to the county necessarily. I think that's on defense, that they know those are the caps. And then they need to come back and ask for expenditures beyond that if some unusual circumstances arise. Was that, is that your understanding?
Uh, I'm not sure, sure it was that clear to me, but maybe I didn't, I might not have read it close enough. I, the sense I got was, we're telling you how much we're going to pay and beyond that, we're not paying further. That's, that's the sense I got, but I, I may have skipped over the part about coming back to ask for more there.
I did read the part in there about coming back.
Come back and ask for more to the fund. There is a provision in there that says the fund is limited to the amount that's in the fund.
Which is a hundred thousand per case and three hundred thousand annually.
No.
Well, go ahead.
I thought that was just the insurance, the.
Oh, maybe I, maybe I got that wrong.
The insurance that the defense council's supposed to have.
Okay.
The minimum coverage for their own insurance was a hundred thousand dollars per claim and three hundred thousand dollars per year. That's just their own, that's just their own malpractice insurance.
Okay.
But I, I did see, it does say in, on page six, at the very top, it says defenders may request that the board exceed the maximum amounts listed in paragraph two A and to be based upon a showing of exceptional circumstances. So I guess my, and it does say defenders shall be required to work within the presumptive caps. Whether or not that would protect the county if, you know, if they went beyond that, I don't know that it's clear that that would be all they could do, but we'd certainly argue that.
And there's nothing we've seen so far that would suggest that there would be any of those extraordinary circumstances. I mean, they, I guess they could come up, but I don't foresee any now, so. So again, I, I think it's a good thing that the, that the board's been willing to cover those.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge and approve that contract.
Step down a sec.
For services.
Step down a second then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number ten, consideration and possible approval of lease agreement with state of Utah for Department of Motor Vehicles office in county administrative building.
Barry? I see him sitting back there. And by the way, thank you for pushing forward with this project.
It's, it's been a job. Commissioners, you have a contract before you with, between the county and the state for lease space with the Department of Motor Vehicles in the previous space that the recreation office occupied. The amount of that lease is two thousand four hundred and eighty-four per month. The date of that contract begins in September, however, the Department of Facility Service, DFCM, whatever.
Facilities and Construction Management.
Thank you. They felt if we put that date out and if the space is available sooner, then we can modify the contract to occupy sooner.
This is a seven-year contract with two five-year renewal options with increases per, on the monthly rent with each of those successive terms, so. They also, as we've worked through this, they are paying for the remodeling costs of the space.
Correct.
And they will pay that upon completions, is that my understanding?
Completion of the remodel.
Of the remodel.
They're also paying the direct cost of the furniture that they'll acquire as well?
Correct. So it.
Go ahead. In the contract, there's also two five renewal, five-year renewal options that can be exercised with an increase in the amount that is paid as part of their rent as well.
Correct. So we're excited to have them join us in the administration building and provide one more centralized service for residents of the county. Again, thank you for helping us get bids out and all that extra late group work that you and your department has gone through. And if everyone doesn't know yet, but the county recreation department has relocated out to the fairgrounds in the, I don't know what you'd call it, recreation small building just to the south of the event center. I'll make a motion to approve the lease and of course, we may come back for a change if it starts earlier.
Step down a second then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number eleven, consideration and approval of contract with BODEC for remodel of administration building to accommodate lease with state of Utah Department of Motor Vehicles.
Commissioners, this contract is for the, to, with the bid openings that was open in the last meeting. There's, you see a few minor changes to that contract. I present two more changes. The liquidated damages line will remain in place with the two hundred dollars per day and the completion date will be June sixteenth. They anticipated it'll be done before that, but that's the date that we've agreed upon for substantial completion.
So you talked to these guys about the, about the delay penalties then or damages?
Yes, yep, they're agreeable to the two hundred dollars.
To keep it at two hundred?
But move the completion date from May twenty-fifth to the June sixteenth.
Correct.
Those were the only two that gave me any concern. Seth, did you see the change in payment as far as fifty percent down, fifty percent at completion? The payment of BODEC, will that be okay with your office?
That'll be fine. They just, they do need to send us an invoice for it because that's what gets the ball rolling if you want to get paid, so.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with BODEC for the remodel of that space.
Step down a second then. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Item number twelve, review and possible approval of contract with Lantus Fireworks for Fourth of July fireworks show at Carbon County Fairgrounds. Frank Corry.
Welcome, Frank.
Hello.
So Christian has reviewed the contract and you made one change, Christian?
Well, I retyped this thing actually. This is the, every year they send us their form contract.
And every year you have to fix it.
Well, and every year I send them back our form contract, which says that they will indemnify us and hold us harmless, and they always sign it. And so I've got it, that's what we did again, and just inserted the, changed the year basically. So they've always approved it and it's the same as what we gave them last year.
I'm sure it'll be fine. It's for ten thousand dollars and it's for the annual fireworks show on the Fourth of July.
Commissioners, I, I found a mistake on page, in paragraph thirteen that I corrected. So the copy you sign should be this one that I'm, I've got right here tonight. It was just, it said, well, there's a grammatical error in there that I fixed, so.
I'll make a motion to approve that contract with the change in paragraph thirteen.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen. I'll step down a second then. All in favor?
Aye.
I just want to let everybody know Casey helped. He worked like, what, twelve hours last year getting ready for the Fourth of July you were right there with us the whole day? We'll expect it again. If I'm in town.
I know.
Usually Fourth of July, I'm at the school field.
I'm just messing with you. Thanks. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Frank.
Item number thirteen, review and a possible approval of continued property tax exemption. Seth Olferson.
Okay. Commissioners, it's not in your packet. It was, it was provided to you before. The, the continued property tax exemption is all the charities, not-for-profits, churches that are tax exempt. And you're provided with a list for you to review before. There is, there are two items on here that, that I would like to address with this. You've been able to review the list. There was one new, a renewing applicant, the ABC Learning Center formerly known as the EC Learning Center, formerly known as the ABC Learning Center. Last year, they did not provide the documentation that they needed to to keep their property tax exempt status. They didn't come back in and sign the form and we contacted them several times and it's in the minutes from last year when we did this, that they would be coming back asking for, for it to be reinstated as a tax-exempt property. They did that after they got their tax bill this year. The, the problem that we have is in order to set up a property to be tax-exempt, they're not supposed to have back taxes pending. And the ABC Learning Center owes one thousand fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents, which would be the tax bill from two thousand and sixteen, which they have not paid. Everything is okay with their application to become an exempt property in two thousand and seventeen. The question is, is will the commission waive the back-year taxes? You have the power to do that to provide a, an adjustment to those taxes. There's also a property this year that's Carbon Medical, which it, that, the one from Carbon Medical is, it's a new property that they've, they've added on there. It's got a timing issue, so it had a penalty and it's seventeen dollars and twenty cents. I'd recommend that one be, be waived, but it's the commission's prerogative if we want to fill them back for the seventeen dollars or, and do it. With the EC Learning Center, everything is current. They provided the information. They've had some change in management, but it's.
Since last year?
Since last year, they've, they've gotten their stuff to us all this year and it was all provided in the packet. We made them give us all of their bylaws and everything else with the property again. And so they, they have all their information for the current year, but the question is, what do we do with the taxes from two thousand and sixteen? The, the commission has the ability to abate those or to forgive those, but it's up to you to decide whether or not you should. I, this one was kind of frustrating with their, getting their acts together with everything last year and not, you know, just kind of just ignoring the problem. It, it would have been on the continuing property tax exempt list last year if they had just come in and signed the piece of paper that they needed to. And that's the frustrating part is they wouldn't respond, it wouldn't respond until they got their tax notice and then they, they jumped on it and read it everything and now they're, they're asking for it to be forgiven, so. End result, if you chose to forgive those taxes, it'd be the same as if they just stayed on it through the, through last year and this year, but.
I believe we gave them some computer monitors last year? No, it was the year before.
Two years ago.
Couple years, three years ago.
They came asking for donations in order to be able to provide basically a library-type service for the students out there to be able to use and do their homework. for the students out there to be able to use and do their homework and things like that, and, and we provided them with those.
Excuse me.
It's, they, they do have their not-for-profit status still, it's current, although they've gone through their name change. The question is just, what do you do with last year's tax?
Well, we'll make our charitable, my motion will be to make our charitable donation to them for the future. No more donations by waiving those tax for last year, and also the one on Carbon Medical.
Okay. I'll step down a second, that motion. Any further discussion?
And then we do need a, a motion as well to, to accept, so it's in the minutes, to accept the continued property tax exemption list.
So probably do that in two motions, so.
Okay, all in favor of the first motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Then I'll make a second motion to accept the tax-exempt properties as you've transmitted those to us.
I'll step down a second, Matt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number 14, review and possible approval of centrally-assessed property appeal contract with County Services Support, Inc. Julie.
Commissioners. I was sent this agreement from you commissioners. Christian has looked at it and is recommending that I be the designee and that he be the vice if I'm not able to attend.
Should we also have maybe a third designee as well, maybe your chief deputy?
Yes, Christian had also mentioned that.
Okay.
And I, I think this will be a, this, this contract will give us access to the expertise of this committee, which will review all of the appeals for centrally-assessed property, advise us as to which ones we can join in with other counties, advise us as to which ones are not worth appealing, tell us where we should appeal, and recommend counsel for us to do that. So that, that will give us access to a lot of expertise that will be really valuable to us as we look at centrally-assessed properties in the future.
Means that they had the new law change where we as counties can now appeal on county, on a county level, but we'll use these expertise. I should've explained that, and also they're asking for a fifteen-hundred-dollar yearly fee for the service, and it's based off of the amount of value each county has on how they determine what we pay.
Well, this is something you deal with every year, so it makes sense where the county can utilize those resources and not just have to stand alone.
Right, and especially now where we, we as a county can, you know, the state will come to us and say, "I can tell you that I have enough that we should probably appeal this. It'll be in our best interest."
And it's one of those ongoing questions of really, what does centrally-assessed tax mean to the citizens of Carbon County? And how does that affect our budget? And so I don't know if you wanna take just a minute and talk about that process while we're in a public meeting, so that we understand.
Sure. So centrally-assessed are things that cross county lines as far as you're talking pipelines, coal mines, telecommunications, airlines, all of that. So the state assesses that based on one lump and then divvies it out to each county depending on how much is actually based in that county. Then the taxpayer, of course, has their option to go in and appeal if they would like to, and it's just always kinda been, in the, in the past, that the counties don't normally win. So now a new law was passed where the county can come in, 'cause it would be the state that would go in and defend. And so now they've passed a law that the county can actually go in after and appeal it. So with this service, they'll tell us, you know, "This is gonna benefit you, you know, you're probably gonna waste more money than time." So that's basically what that does, but if, every year when that's done, when the value goes down, the shift hits us on our taxes as local taxpayers.
And, I mean, it's been going down for a number of years. This year, how far?
This year, I haven't even got my centrally-assessed book yet to know.
I mean, last year, I'm sorry.
Last year was two million, I believe.
Yeah, two, nearly two and a half if I remember right.
But I also wanted to let you know too, that thirty-eight percent of the taxable value for the county is centrally-assessed. So we have quite a, quite a huge portion of our...
Yeah, and based, based on their numbers, our fee is based on eight-hundred-and-fifty-one million dollars in centrally-assessed property, so significant amount. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve that we enter into the agreement with County Services Support, Inc. and pay the fifteen-hundred-dollar fee and appoint Julie as the representative with Christian as a backup and the chief deputy from your office as two others that could fill in in case you can't attend.
Can I mention one more thing? It just came to me. If this is something we're not happy with, with that, within the year, then we can opt out. It's a year-to-year basis, but once we sign for this year, we're in, but if we find out, you know, this is a waste of money or whatever, we can, we can sign out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I get it signed? Oh, sorry.
Hang on, we gotta pass it, approve it first.
Alright, sign.
We have a motion on the table. I'll step down a second, Matt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now, now we can sign it.
Thank you. Now can you sign it, 'cause I need it.
Actually, the chair is not here today.
He'll sign it. I hope it'll help you in your process.
I think it was on the... Thank you.
Item number 15, review and possible approval of amendment to the administrative office of the courts with Seventh District Court Building, Seth Olvison.
Hey, commissioners, in your packet, you have an amendment. It's amendment number six to our lease agreement with the administrative office of the courts for the existing Seventh District Court Building. What necessitates this is their court's desire to funnel additional funding into the new Seventh District Court project, doing some of the things that they wanted to do. They had some changes to that project. The mechanism that they wanted to, to use to pay for it, so they wouldn't have to go back for legislative funding, would be to amend the lease, which they can do it, handle administratively. In the addendum, if you look, it provides for their fiscal 2016-17 year and 2017-18 year to provide an additional $200,000 each of those years, another $400,000 to the county, which we will then hold and use towards that project. If I wanna give us $400,000 more, I would, my recommendation is to approve it.
So does, does that change the bond amount at all?
For, no.
Well, they, they put in here the thirteen-point-eight million on the bond. That, that number hasn't changed then? That's the same number as before?
No, we, we still have the same bonding. The problem is the, the project was slightly over what we had bonded for, and the administrative office of the courts agreement with us is that they would fund the full project even if there was a cost overrun, and this is their mechanism of getting that money into our hands so we can pay for it.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
I'll step down a second, Matt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.